Perfect. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 8th City of Willow's City Council Regular Meeting. We'll call the meeting in order at 6 o'clock. First up, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Monk, will you get us on that?
Yeah. Salute. Play.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For that, next we will have roll call.
Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, uh, city manager, any changes to the agenda?
Only that the Community Development and Services Director felt ill this afternoon, so I will be pitch hitting anywhere on the agenda that it's necessary. On his behalf.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we have three ceremonial matters, uh, three proclamations. The first one will be for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, which will be given to Glen County Child Welfare Services. So this proclamation reads, whereas children are vital to Glen County's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and every child deserves to grow up in a safe, loving, and nurturing environment, and whereas child abuse and neglect remain significant concerns that have lasting detrimental effects on the well-being of children, families, and communities. And whereas in 2024, Glen County had 615 reports of child abuse and neglect, highlighting the ongoing need for education, prevention, and intervention efforts. And whereas the Office of Child Abuse Prevention has designated It Takes a Village as the theme for the Child Abuse Prevention Month 2025. Recognizing that protecting children is a shared responsibility that requires the commitment of families, social services agencies, schools, faith-based organizations, law enforcement, businesses, and community members working together. And whereas It Takes a Village emphasizes that every person has a role in protecting children, whether by supporting parents, mentoring youth, advocating for strong child welfare policies, or fostering environments where children feel safe and valued. And whereas thriving children require connection, community, togetherness, support, and collective responsibility. And it is through these shared efforts that we can create safe and nurturing environments for all children. And whereas research has identified key protective factors that reduce the likelihood of child abuse and neglect, including parental resilience, social connections, knowledge of parenting and child development, concrete support in times of need, and social emotional competence for children. And whereas strengthening these protective factors through community involvement and support services helps families build strong foundations that promote safety, stability, and well-being for children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs rely on collaboration to strengthen families and build resilience and provide essential resources that help parents and caregivers navigate challenges before they escalate into crises. And whereas wearing blue on April 4th for Go Blue Day served as a visible commitment to standing against child abuse and showing support for the well-being of all children in Glen County. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage all residents to embrace the spirit of It Takes a Village by working together to protect children, strengthen families, and build a safer, healthier community for all. And witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 8th day of April 2025. Do you guys have something to add to that?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Hudson and councilmembers. My name is Cynthia Reyes, and I am with Lisa Perman, and we are here today representing Child Welfare Services for the Health and Human Services Agency. We appreciate the opportunity to bring attention to an issue that affects the very foundation of our community, our children. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is the time for us to unite in raising awareness, promoting education, and reinforcing our collective commitment to protecting the most vulnerable among us. In Glen County, there were 615 total reports of abuse and neglect in 2024 and 94 open cases last quarter. We wanted to highlight the importance of working together to protect our children and support their well-being. And as you heard about, uh, it takes the village, um, is the theme for the month. And it's, this is an African proverb, speaks to the truth that it takes many people working together to support a child's development and ability to thrive. Thriving children require connection, community, togetherness, support, and a sense of collective responsibility by committing to being part of our village. We would like to share some things that are happening throughout the month of April.
Good evening. While we talked about April 4th as the statewide Wear Blue Day, child welfare staff challenge our village uh, to wear blue on Wednesdays throughout the month of April. We hope you take pictures wearing blue and upload them to our social media hashtag. Hashtag Glen County Wears Blue, the number four kids, to show your support and lift up this important message. This Saturday, April 12th, we are hosting the Child and Family Resource Fair at Lally Park in Orland from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. This event will provide children and family resources and feature a variety of entertainment, including an Easter egg hunt, dancers, military equipment, many different mascots, including Smokey Bear, Chipper. We have many bounce houses, games, food, and more. We would love to see you all there. Throughout the month of April, HHSA will be sharing weekly social media posts throughout the month with child abuse prevention information, tips, and activities for parents, guardians, caregivers, local business partners, faith-based communities, as well as information about events. We hope you will follow us on Glen County Health and Human Service Agency dash HHSA. We encourage sharing our social media posts. If the city could do so, we would appreciate that. We will continue, uh, the Child Abuse Prevention Month with the Children's Memorial Flag Raising Ceremony, which will be held on April 25th to Friday from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Glen County Office of Education here in Willow. The National Day of Remembrance, established by the resolution passed by Congress on April 1st, 2001, honors the tragic reality of violence against children and reminds us of the importance of our collective efforts in this prevention. We'd like to thank you for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd like to share a little bit about the activities that we have for the remaining of the month. As I said, April 12th is our Child and Family Resource Fair. On April 25th is our Children's Memorial Raising of the Flag here in Willow's at Glen County Office of Education. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Counsel, any questions?
No, thank you. Well, thank you. Keep the good work. It's tough, tough job what you do with child abuse. Very difficult. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Some flyers if I could leave with someone?
If you want to just leave him here on the table, that would be perfect, and we can make sure and grab him. And we have the proclamation to give you. If you'd like a photo receiving it, you can do that.
You had a photo bomb that?
I don't know. Yes.
Thank you.
You're supposed to wear it all month. I wasn't coming to a council meeting on the course for tonight.
We have one more or another two proclamations. This one is going to be handed to the Glen County Victim and Witness Program. This is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month, S A A M, is observed each April to raise awareness about the widespread and devastating impact of sexual assault, support survivors, and promote education and prevention efforts. And whereas sexual violence affects individuals across all ages, genders, race, races, and communities, and survivors often face emotional, physical, and psychological consequences that can last a lifetime. And whereas every individual has the right to live in safety, free from the fear of sexual violence, and it is the shared responsibility of all members of society to work towards eliminating sexual assault and its harmful effects. Whereas it is crucial to foster and culture, to foster a culture of respect, consent, and equality. Whereas survivors are supported, believed, and empowered. And whereas individuals who commit acts of sexual violence are held accountable. And whereas support services, advocacy, and resources like the Glen County Victim and Witness Program play a vital role in helping individuals heal and rebuild their lives. And whereas raising awareness about the prevalence of sexual assault and promoting education on the importance of consent and healthy relationships is essential in creating a world where sexual violence is prevented, and survivors are never blamed or silenced. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I urge all individuals and organizations to join in this effort to raise awareness, educate others, and work toward ending sexual violence in our society. Together, we can make a lasting difference by supporting survivors, advocating for justice, and creating a future free from sexual assault. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 8th day of April 2025. Would you guys like to give a brief statement?
Hello, everyone. My name is Letizia Ojeda, and I'm here with Dulce Perez, and we are victim advocates at the Glen County District Attorney's Office. On behalf of the Victim Witness Program, we are deeply honored to accept this proclamation in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. As advocates, our office has met many survivors of sexual assault and abuse. Our program offers accompaniment for sexual assault exams, information about victim rights, including the rights specific to sexual assault. We also provide accompaniment for law enforcement interviews in court, information about a criminal case, access to resources and services, especially through the California Victim Compensation Board that will pay for crime-related expenses, including mental health counseling. And we provide emotional support as survivors navigate life following a horrendous crime. As I am here, I would like to let everyone know this week is also Victim Rights Week, an event that has been proclaimed in our county and celebrated nationwide as a way to recognize victims and their rights. We are currently recognizing eight individuals, both survivors and professionals in our community on our Glen County District Attorney Facebook page. So please check it out and show our community members some love. This year's theme is connection, kinship, and healing. And I believe that healing starts through events like this that show survivors in our community that we support them. Because by creating that narrative, we are fostering an environment that allows people to feel safety in reporting and getting the services they need. So thank you to all of you here today, and thank you for allowing us to speak. And we have some purple ribbons that we wear during Victim Rights Week to show our support that we'll leave here for.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And then, last but not least proclamation is National Volunteer Week. Whereas National Volunteer Week is a time to recognize and celebrate the countless individuals and organizations who give their time, energy, and resources to make a positive impact in their communities and around the world. Whereas volunteers are the heart of many organizations and initiatives, offering selfless contributions that help strengthen communities, support those in need, and enhance the overall well-being of society. And whereas a spirit of volunteerism fosters a sense of unity and encourages people from all walks of life to come together and services to others, creating lasting change and strengthening the bonds of community. And whereas volunteers support vital programs in education, healthcare, social services, the environment, and countless other areas that improve the lives of individuals and families in our community. And whereas it is important to recognize the valuable role that volunteers play in our society and to encourage others to join in the spirit of service, continuing the tradition of volunteerism that contributes to the better future for all. And whereas the City of Willow's would like to recognize that many volunteer organizations serving the city and county residents that make, that help make our community a supportive and welcoming place to live. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the week of April 20th through 26th, 2025, as National Volunteer Week. And urge all citizens to recognize the valuable contributions of volunteers, express gratitude to their efforts, and support volunteerism by getting involved in local organizations, projects, initiatives. And witness there, whereof, I have hereon to set hand an official seal this 8th day of April 2025. Anyone here that volunteers, that would be wanting to accept?
That could be probably every one of you in some capacity or other. Volunteer. Yeah, as well as the council.
But I will hold on to that one, and we will go on to our next item.
Well, Chief Monk could pass our thanks on to all of the volunteers in fire, for sure. It's true.
All right, next up is item 6A, The Transition of Childhood. This is a presentation by Dr. Garrison. Thank you for taking the time to come and give this presentation.
Vowing me to be able to come and councilman, I really appreciate it. I, I, I feel like this is something that's important, and I appreciate you letting me come and talk to you today. Um, a lot of what I'm going to be talking about comes out of this book, The Anxious Generation. It's kind of, it's a very interesting book. It's written by a um, by a Dr. Jonathan Hyatt. And what he points out is, is that we've had a transition. So it used to be when I grew up, um, depending on the age, but um, oftentimes, one of the common things my mom would say is, is go outside and play until the streetlights come on and then come back home. And oftentimes, uh, you know, a lot of, with my childhood was primarily revolving around friends. We, I, I had a good set of friends, and I got together with them virtually every day. What's happened with us, we've had this transition to being more phone-based, more electronic-based, more screen-based. And typically, so like for oftentimes for a teenager, when they wake up, the first thing they do is, is, uh, uh, is they might go ahead and they check to see who's, what, what's happened on Instagram. Gosh, what, what mess, what things have I missed out? You got that fear of missing out. They look and they see, gee, how does my post compare to so-and-so's post? And, um, and as opposed to dealing with being with friends face-to-face, it's all goes through this phone, or for boys, video games. They get on the video games, but they're not in person. And so with that has come some, some, that's been a significant shift in our, uh, in our culture. And this is kind of some of the effects. And what I'm really going to be talking to you today about is about how that has changed our youth and the impact that it's had on their emotional development. And so you can see, um, I guess it's a TV, so I can't show. I can't point to it, but you can see the red line. It says, uh, I can't do anything right. And so this is, uh, this is looking at eighth, 10th, and 12th graders. And they ask these kids these questions, and you can see that before 2005, that I can't do anything right was a little bit more than 30%. Now it's up to almost 50%. You can see there's just been a steady climb. My life is not useful. That's a terrible thought. That, um, and you can see how that has changed the time, really kind of starting especially, um, around 2010, that really starting to pick up. And then I do not enjoy life. It's again 50%. Some things that happened during that time period. So, um, in, uh, in 2005 was actually when we started having the iPhone come down. Um, well, a couple of years before that. That's when they started having it so that they had screens that faced forward so you could take selfies. We had, uh, Facebook started having lights in 2004. It's 2005, about 25% of high school students had a phone. And by 2010, about 75%. Now we're at more than 95%. Let's continue on. So this is major depressive episodes in the last year. So this is looking at our youth percentage of them that met the criteria for major depression. And you can see that we went from about 13% with girls and how it skyrocketed up to 28%. And how we went from five to over 11, more than doubling. And once again, you can see that just starting to happen as they started having more and more of the cell phones. You can see this is a prevalence of anxiety. Once again, this is looking at percentages. And you can see this is looking at adults, the 18 to 25-year-olds took the biggest hit. And then each set of age groups below that were less impacted. This is high school students spending time every day with friends. It's a big decrease, isn't it? You can see how that's just funneling. One of the numbers that I've heard is, is that it used to be that students spent about 140 minutes a day face-to-face with their peers, and now it's about 40 minutes a day face-to-face with their peers. Loneliness amongst 15- and 16-year-olds had doubled from 2012 to 2018 in the U.S. That's a big change. We have a lot more loneliness than what we used to, don't we? Those phones just aren't good substitutes for the real-life friends that are before us. I'll tell you something that's kind of interesting about this, um, this study that was done was is that they looked at 37 different countries. And as the change to electronic and a phone-based childhood takes to succeed, you could follow how it impacted their mental health. 37 different countries had almost doubled. There was one that didn't make it. And that one, they were, they were in a recession, and so they didn't have as many phones. You can actually go into different parts of the different populations, and when they're having economic hard times and the kids don't have the phones, their emotional health. This is, um, this is looking at, this is from the UK, so United Kingdom, but I think it's interesting, and I think it probably parallels um, what's happening in the United States as well. 1975 and the change, screen-based activities. On average, now, we're saying that about seven and a half to nine hours a day is in front of a screen, not counting time at school and not counting doing homework. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of time. The other thing that's happened is, is we've become more structured. Our kids tend to be a lot more in sports, in dance, in karate, in whatever. And their time where they're just hanging out with their friends just doesn't happen like it used to. That socializing out of the home or outdoor play just doesn't happen. There is a, a man, David Bednar, who, um, who said, you know, this is a little bit like carbon monoxide. And carbon monoxide by itself really isn't harmful. What the problem is, is that our red blood cells carry oxygen. And it binds to those, that molecules inside there, and it doesn't allow the oxygen to go on. And so of itself, it's not the problem. The problem is the lack of oxygen. And so what can happen is, is that we can be consuming this stuff that isn't good for us, and it's replacing all of the things that are good for us. And that's kind of what's happening with this technology. There's, and there's lots of good things with the technology too, but we can see just kind of what's happened with our youth's mental health. This is emergency department visits for cell farm for 10 to 14 months. Staggering, isn't it? All right, we just got data from Glen Medical. From 2015 to 2018, there was about 12.25% percent, uh, people per year who were, had to be taken to Glen Medical for cell farm. Last year, it was 88. 12.588. Little bit different, but it kind of makes sense. We're a little bit poorer county. We're probably just a little bit farther behind. The scary thing is, is it's not slowing down. It's not decreasing. The suicide rates, fortunately, they, they haven't gone up at, at quite the rate that we've had. Matter of fact, the last few years have actually been down from our average when we look at for in Glen County. AI, AI is going to change things. This is going to get far more. The temptations for our youth to be on their phones, on video games, on whatever is just going to become that much greater. AI, I mean, really, between TikTok and Facebook and Instagram, it's a war. It's, it's a, it's a battleground for them and our time. If they can keep us on their screen just a little bit longer, then that's better for their advertising. That's better for the bottom line. And we can have, and they have minutes from their board meetings where they have specialists in addiction come and talk about what's the most addictive things to do. That's, that's just, that's just reality. He's got the, he's got the documents in the book. The other thing that's kind of scary is, is that they've got these AI companions or partners. And you can talk to them, have face. It's almost like they're a real person. But they're not. They're never going to have an opinion that goes against your own. They're always going to tell you exactly what you want. They're going to figure it out, because that's what the program do, and they're going to become like a perfect friend. Completely unrealistic, right? We've already had in the state of California, people who have taken their lives because they wanted to be with their AI. Terrifying. Terrifying. So what can be done? What can be done? So there's a couple of things that I'd like to suggest. Uh, one of them is the American Academy of Pediatrics. They've got a media, um, where, let's see, it's media, family media plan, that's what it's called. It's got a couple of things that are really great. So it talks about priorities. So you sit down with your child and you talk about what is it that's your priorities in your life? What's important? And then it goes ahead and it talks about finding a balance. Then it goes ahead and it talks about communication. And what are, how are we going to, as parents and kids, how are we going to talk about? And then it goes on and it And then it goes on and it talks about kindness and empathy because on social media, it can be kind of brutal. Right? Uh, there's lots of more bullying now than there used to be, especially amongst the girls as a result of that. And then it talks about, um, and I didn't quite read it, but it talks about having time that's away from the phone. So for instance, one of them that's really good is setting a time at night where you're not on your phone. I was just talking to a teacher and he was saying, he was asking students when they were, when they acted tired, what time did you go to bed? Three, four in the morning. And because they're on that and it's just so hard to get off. So time before bed, a certain time of shutting that off and then having places that are phone free. For instance, the dinner table. There's so much data behind dinner tables and eating as a family having conversation. And I talked to them. And then what's nice is, is you agree upon all of this, you print it out and you can put it on your fridge. And you can refer back to it. Because there is going to be that temptation to do more, more, more. What to do with that extra time? Unstructured, unsupervised playtime is so good for our brain. In this age where everything is go, go, go and stimulation, 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 we're never bored. When was the last time we were really bored? Our brain needs it's developed that. There is a program that's called Let Grow. I think it's kind of a neat program. Um, and I'm, I'm not going to, well, I'll, I'll do my best to read it. I, I, my vision is not great. But this is a parent's pledge. And so this is a contract for the, for the parent assignment. And then there's one for the, for the kid. It says, we all know that kids need unstructured free time, playtime and a chance to figure out things on their own. Because that's how they develop life skills, deep interest and resilience. And whereby we also know that it's really hard not to jump in and make things easier for them. Or give them great advice or just take over. But we get it. We need to do that. We're actually denying our kids some powerful learning experiences. Therefore, be it resolved that we take a commitment to step back and will allow some frustration and imperfection. We will not let the kid.
We will.
We will let the kids be bored, thank you, long enough, uh, to find something to do besides TikTok. We will supply some Band-Aids and try not to freak out. One of the other things that's happened is, is as our kids have gone inside and on their phone, they have unlimited computer access. But they're not really doing things in the real world. And part of that is a little bit of overprotective. The kids pledge whereby this coming year, I will of course grow older. So will everybody else. But anyway, whereby I would like some more independence. And I know that also means that I have to show how responsible. Let it therefore, let it be therefore resolved. That day by day, I'll start to do more things on my own after getting my parents' permission. I will not deliberately do anything bad, hurt or hurt someone. And I will go and do something, uh, or I will not go and do something I'm not allowed. I'll basically be a good kid and just with some more independence, responsibility. This is a wonderful website. They've got a full program. They've got, um, all kinds of ideas for kids to do outside. Um, there's school programs where they actually give kids, uh, where they actually give kids homework assignments to do things like they, they haven't done before. Dinner, walk to school on their own, all kinds of different things. When I look at this graph, it's terrifying. It's terrifying. We've got kids that are struggling in ways they have never struggled before. And with AI, that's only going to be getting worse. And I, I think that we as adults and we as community leaders and as parents and and the community on the whole, we need to be aware of this. And we need to try and help out where we can. And I really want to applaud you guys for all of your effort and work that you guys have put in with the pool. This is right along with this. This is getting the kids out of the home and out of those electronics and down socializing with their friends, learning how to read emotions, getting into disagreements and not having somebody solve it for them. All of those things that lead to independence and confidence that our kids unfortunately are being denied. One of those, you know, when we had the, our Fentanyl Town Hall meeting, we had about seventy people there and I don't know how many were at each table. There's probably six, eight, something like that. Every one of the, when we did it in Willow, every one of the tables, we talked about what we could be doing to try and prevent drug use. Every single one of them said, we need more things for youth to do. We need more things to do for youth to do. I think that the library needs to be one of those things. It gets them off their thoughts. It's interesting. When we look at, when we look at scrolling on social media, it increases our. When we even look at TV, we think, oh, I'm going to relax and watch TV. Our stress hormones actually don't go down when we're watching TV. Anything, they tend to go up. Surely it depends upon what we're watching. But they tend to go up. When we read a book, it goes down. It decreases depressive symptoms. It decreases anxiety. It increases resilience. It increases empathy. All these wonderful things. All these wonderful things. My, we, in Orland, we just recently launch, launched the Bookworm Express. I'm, I'm a little bit terrified, to be honest, at how much interest there's got. It's been five days and we have about a hundred and ten kids that have signed up. We weren't thinking that we would get that one. We're able to do that because we've got a children's librarian. We'd love to do this in Willow. But we got to have a children's librarian. Having a library, and one of the cool things about this is, is now we've got all these kids, how easy is it to slide in some education? Some stuff about ideas, about what to do with your child other than screen time. So, um, you know, we've already, we've already got about five things that we've got planned out for, to send home the books. To try and help those parents be more successful with their kids. Um, because the reality is, is we're all kind of going into uncharted. And, um, and I think that we need all the help, especially those young parents, um, that they can possibly get. I, I want to, once again, thank you guys for allowing me to, to come here. Um, and really for your willingness to support our youth. You guys have done a wonderful job in doing that. And I'm really hoping that we'll go ahead and continue with that. Um, and I'm really hoping that we can get a children's librarian so we can do this. We can be doing some other programs, um, to really try and engage our youth with things that are other than phones, other than electronics, things that are good for our brain as opposed to the law. Thank you, Green.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
Any questions, any questions or anything?
No, no, thank you. I mean, you're.
Super informative. Thank you.
Yeah, 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 startling information. And you know, with the cyberbullying and the, and everything else with, uh, you know, social media, it's, it's frightening. So, yeah. But it's, it's, uh, it's excellent information, uh, striking statistics, but I just want to thank you. You know, you've, you're not only a dedicated, uh, outstanding position, you have been for many years here. I'm sure glad you're here, but you done a fine job as a, as a county health official. So thank you for the work you've done. So give up the good work.
One more announcement. So anybody who's interested in the book, um, Glen County Office of Ed has purchased a hundred of them. And they would like to do a book club, um, on it. Um, and I've got a QR code if you would like to sign up. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Yes, we also have topics.
All right. Next item on the agenda will be our public comment and consent calendar forum. Since we have a lot of folks here today, I'll read this all. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first requests that a matter be removed or for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing, wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff or the audience. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the city council, please mail it to the city clerk or email it to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityclerk@citywillowes.org. Is there any public comment on anything not on the agenda tonight?
Excellent. Thank you. I agree with everything he said. My name is Becca Boning. Um, I'm a pediatrician here in Willow's. Um, I'm a member of Willow's Pediatrics. Um, I'm also the mother of three young children who love reading libraries. Um, I am here tonight to urge you to prioritize funding for our library. With, I guess for the past ten plus years, Willow's Pediatrics, formerly Dr. Reed's office, has sponsored the summer reading program. Um, to sponsor this program, we need libraries. Um, reading, as we all know, is the foundation for all learning. This begins in infancy. As a pediatrician, my job is to emphasize the importance of reading. And I'm continually alarmed by the families in our community who don't realize that this is a priority and believe it or not, who don't have books in their home. Thanks to the library, we actually get donations and we're able to give each family a book. And as well as a just a special. Without a summer reading program, without a pool, okay, there is nothing for our kids to do here. All right? And the summer reading program must happen. We must get a children's librarian. Um, without either of these things, as Dr. Reed has presented, kids are glued to their electronic devices. All right. And as he shared, nothing good becomes of this. Study after study shows the negative consequences. Um, decreased literacy rates, some of the health problems, right? Literacy has actually been tied to obesity rates. Maybe the list goes on. Um, so I urge all of us as community leaders to prioritize reading, right? Um, to put value in reading, to put value in our library and continue to fund our library and our library. Thank you. And your service to our community.
Thank you. Is there any other? Quick reminder, if there's further comments on the library position, that is an agendized item. And we can actually bring it up and have a discussion at that point. This is for anything that's currently not on the agenda. So just want to make sure I clarify that. All right.
Thank you.
And please bear with me. I am still learning this position. I know it's been a couple of months, but I don't mean to exclude anything. So if I forget to say something, please let me know. I'll make sure I clarify. All right. At this point, um, I will open it up to the council and.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no objections from my colleagues, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded.
We have a first and a second. All on approval of items seven, A through E being approved as one motion. Somebody was saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion pass five zero. All right. Next up, we have discussion and action calendar items. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes as each agenda item is reviewed and discussed by council. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff or the audience. When the mayor calls for the public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged while not required. The city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the city council, please mail it to the city clerk to this place or email as well to the city clerk. First item is item eight A, planning commission appointments. Uh, this would be a Joe Benton Court. Proposal. So we'll give it to our city manager, Marty.
Just very quickly, I think that the ad hoc committee of the council is very able of, to talk about the, um, two applications that were received, but we did go through a recruitment process. Originally it was for one vacancy. Then another planning commissioner resigned and so we extended the filing period. We received three a, applications initially and then one of those applications withdrew shortly before the interviews. And so the ad hoc committee of the council ended up interviewing two applicants for two vacancies. With that, I will hand it over to the ad hoc committee for further comment.
Lori, would you like to go first on that one since you have been in a planning commissioner as well?
Well, I've been a planning commissioner and I function as the liaison to our planning commission. And so it's always a little bit um, disheartening, if you will, that we get so few applications to serve on some of these commissions. The planning commission is actually a pretty critical component of our city processes. Um, and we're just a work in process as we work to streamline those processes, educate the commission and so on. So with that being said, we had two applicants, Keith Coram and Christina Ocampo. I would say we had a spectrum of someone like Keith Coram, who has many, many, many years of serving on the Willow's Planning Commission. He has served on the Willow City Council. He has served on the County Planning Commission. He has served as a board supervisor. Longtime member of the community. So he's exceedingly well qualified to serve on our planning commission. And the applicant Christina Ocampo, she's a business owner here in the community. Um, has a heart to serve in the community, comes with very little experience in this kind of a format of um, looking at planning projects and, and learning. Um, so two different spectrums. Again, a heart to serve the community. We, the two terms we have, one term is expiring at the end of this calendar year, December thirty-one. So the motion before us tonight or the recommendation from the, um, committee of Evan and I is to appoint the, 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 the person with the heart to serve that doesn't have a lot of experience in a planning commission capacity to the shorter term through December thirty-one. And then appoint Keith Coram to the term ending December thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven. And I don't know if you had anything else you want to add to that?
Nope. Sounds like you covered everything. Uh, is there any public comment on this item before we go to council questions? Hey, does the council have any questions regarding this item?
Just, just to, just to comment, thank you for, uh, uh, serving on the subcommittee. And I, I think, uh, uh, these two individuals, Christina Campo and Keith Coram had a very good mix to our current planning commission. I think it'll be a, yeah, a a deep bench of varied experience and that's the way a, a five-member panel should be. So yeah, I definitely agree with, uh, appointing these two individuals. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good. Thank you for, uh, serving on the committee.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll leave it to the pleasure of the council at this point then.
I would move to approve these two and appoint these two to the planning commission in the terms as identified by Lori in her presentation.
I have a first. Is there a second?
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion pass five zero. Next up, item eight B is city contract template. I will give this over to Marty.
We'll hand it over to the city attorney.
We'll hand this over to the city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, yeah, I've been still, uh, getting to know the city and, and the processes. And part of that is, uh, when I came on board, I asked to, you know, learn a little bit more about your standard contracting processes. And I was somewhat surprised to learn that, um, you did not have a standardized contract template, which is a, a pretty common feature. So, um, this item before you is basically a proposed template for use for any future contracts that the city may, uh, decide to undertake. Um, the purpose of a template is to provide a, a good foundation for whatever legal agreement that you're going to be entering into. Um, the tent, the template basically provides some vetted verbiage that I have found very helpful for public entities to protect their interests and make sure that, uh, they're entering into valid, uh, binding contracts that are advantageous to the entity. But also fair to whatever vendor or contractor they're working for, they're working with. So this is a, you know, a proposed template. It is, like I said, a foundation. And so obviously with contracts, you know, particular facts or circumstances, uh, underlying the need for the contract may require some deviation from the template. And if uh, that were to occur, should you approve this template, um, that would certainly be pointed out. that were to occur, should you approve this template, that would certainly be pointed out to you at the time that that contract's being contemplated. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Council members, any questions?
I have one simple question. Looks like it kind of makes an effort to cover all the bases and you can move and delete. And so I think that's a positive. I noticed in reading it, I didn't find any reference to prevailing wage. So my question is that issued covered in our RFP? Or on page eight where it's under XXX, the contractors should comply within, in all federal, state and local laws, regulations and ordinance affecting the services covered by this contract.
So, council member, yes, the the contract template as proposed includes basically all the bases in its kind of kitchen sink, sink approach. So depending upon the nature of the contract, some of these terms would be removed. The prevailing wage would apply to public works contracts. And while that may be addressed in the RFP, when you actually enter into the agreement, you do need to make sure that you have verbiage there covering that.
So that would be covered in attachment A?
That would be part of the attachment A, which would be the scope of services.
And does it attachment A bring in the terms and conditions for which we put out the RFP?
So attachment A would be like basically the scope of work. And so that would detail the specific requirements of the work that's to be performed by the vendor. And so that would be including, you know, providing the prevailing wage and the specific.
Matters is contained in the RFP request.
Yes.
We would state that in the RFP as well.
Right. Thank you. That's it.
I'd had several questions that I emailed to staff prior to, and they answered it. And some of it was the gist of what we're talking about now, things that would be modified based on the exact nature of the contract. So, yeah, I had questions with answers, but they're very technical and and I was satisfied with the answer from staff that just said, based on the exact nature of the contract, things will be modified somewhat, but in a nutshell, all of our contracts would have the same format. Easier to follow and replicate. Thank you.
Councilmember Bosby, anything to add?
Nope.
Councilmember Hanson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I only had one recommendation. It was a typo. It was corrected. Counselor, excellent, excellent work. Great idea bringing this forward. I don't know why it wasn't thought of before. I mean, this just makes sure that all the the legal bases are covered and all the requirements are covered each and every time. It's just, it's just good business. Not to mention, this will save a lot of staff time with, with contracts. And as we know, in municipal operations, there are a lot of contracts. So, so thank you for bringing this forward. I having dealt with municipal contracts for too many years that I want to mention, I, I think it's excellent, fantastic, great document, great, great working document. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. The only other item that I will add is, like I said, contracting, you know, depends upon the facts and circumstances. And so the, the recommendation would be that the template be used at every opportunity that it can be. Certainly, certain times, contracts, you'll end up engaged in what's called the battle of the forms where the vendor or the other party that you're contracting with will have their own form. And sometimes you have to acquiesce just to move things along, so long as we add to that form, our preferred terms that make sure that we're covered. I'm predominantly thinking about contracts with the state. The state often does not budge from their form. And also IT providers are also pretty particular. But by and large, this, the recommendation would be to use this form at every opportunity.
Yeah, I think that that's a great opportunity for us to have one solid format for making it a little easier to do business with the city and the city to do business with others with this. So is there any public comment regarding this? Item? All right, I will give this to the pleasure of the council then.
Mr. Mayor moved to adopt the proposed contract template as a city standard contract of use for projects and/or services that exceed ten thousand dollars as presented.
First by councilmember Hanson.
Second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Pride is the second. Any further discussion? All those opposed or all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion pass five to zero. All right, item eight C, children's librarian position. Marty, I'll have you down as a staff.
Yes, that is correct. The item that is before the council is to seek approval for moving forward with hiring a part-time children's librarian in the Willow's Library. Just for a little bit of background, we had a full-time children's librarian up until September, and then that person took a position in Orland. And, and then permanently left the city in February of this year. The position was made full-time and permanent in fiscal year twenty-three, when the library received a grant. And a portion of that grant was basically used to pay for the other half of the position. We were already paying for it as a part-time position. So prior to twenty-three, it was part-time. I don't know for how long. But before, I believe I started here in twenty twenty-one. And it was full-time for the first fiscal year with the grant. Then the library did not receive the grant again. And then the general fund picked up the remaining portion of that position the following fiscal year last year until the position was vacated, as I mentioned. So this recommendation is simply to return to what it was prior to twenty twenty-three, which was a part-time position. And the only reason I'm bringing it forward now, prior to the budget, is simply because I believe it was made apparent to all of us at a prior council meeting by a member of the library board and friends of the library that there's some time sensitivity about planning for children's programming for the summer, which I didn't realize before that. Originally, we were going to try to bring the discussion for it as part of the mid-year budget. But we are a little delayed on that, so I'm bringing it forward at this time in consideration of the planning that's going around for children's programming for the summer. I don't really have anything else to add unless the council has questions for me.
Any council members have questions?
I would like to hear from Jody tell us what she sees for this position. I'll leave it open because you're the one that's going to have to administer these people, so.
Right, well.
I'd like to hear from you and your thoughts.
Thoughts on keeping it part-time or, or full-time as it was budgeted or just in general?
Well, let me back up for a second.
Sure.
And forgive me, because there's a lot about the library that I am not familiar with. I haven't sat on the, on the, as a liaison from the council. I don't know how many employees you have, full-time, part-time. I don't know what it would look like if you were fully funded and fully staffed. What is, what do you have today? What do you, what would be the perfect ideal? Obviously, we need to balance where we are financially with where you are. So
Right.
Your thoughts on filling positions that we have or need at the library?
Right. And I think that's one of the reasons why, why we felt that it was so important for the children's librarian position to be full-time, because we only have one current full-time employee, the library technician, Caitlin. And in a lot of places, and that has, that's something that's happened over the years. Library did in, in previous, unfortunately, at this point, like decades, had, had many more full-time employees, you know, a handful of them, four to five, probably at a time was more standard. And over the years, you know, due to budget cuts and, and things that has gone down to where you currently only have one full-time person. When I, right prior to my becoming, coming here as library director, the library did have two full-time staff, being the library director and the library technician. A few years before that, there was a full-time children's librarian. In a lot of places, probably there would be more of a focus on, on having another full-time library technician who could do a lot of the technical services and things like that. But the reason we, we, we focused on the children's librarian position rather than bringing back one of the other library technicians was because of the need in the community, because we hear all of the time that the residents are asking for more children's activities. They want more, a, a place for, to go with their children to do, to do things with them and not just read. You know, I, if any of you have visited the children's section in the library, it is full of activities. There's, you know, obviously, we promote probably the reading, the reading part of it the heaviest, but there's all kinds of educational activities in the children's section that we've been really fortunate to get a lot of grants from the state library and from other agencies. And of course, the donations that we receive through the community has allowed us to purchase, you know, telescopes, microscopes, all kinds of, all kinds of interesting things for families to use together. And even expanding beyond just like our usual thought of zero to twelve children. Our teens section has been, when we had a children's librarian on staff, has also been much more well-used. The friends of the library actually had the high school wood shop build us a chess checkers table a few years ago. And it's been incredible. I, I confess, I myself was skeptical, like, really, the kids are going to want to come in, you know? I was like, they have fun or things to do, right? No, they, they, they gravitated to that immediately. We now have, you know, a group of teens that will come, they'll run over on their lunch break from the high school and challenge each other to, to chess games. So I think that really, we were just trying to respond to what we've heard that the community wanted was more children's activities. Whether that's the really little kids at storytime or the, that giving the teens something to do. So that, that's, yeah, that's our, our thoughts on it.
Do you have part-time employees?
Yes.
Without, I don't need names because we're.
Sure, sure. Technically, we were funded for four part-time employees. We actually only have three right at the moment because we, you know, that's the other thing. There's a lot of, there's a high turnover with the part-time staff. The, they're always obviously looking usually for full-time work with benefits, or they're just looking for someplace where they can get a slightly higher hours, you know, dollars per hour. You know, the library just, you know, can't offer, we can't compete with all guys, a lot of the other places. And even we're restricted to only being able to schedule them nineteen hours a week. You know, due to, to, you know, the rules with pers and things like that. So we can't even offer them like overtime or we can't, I can never, I can never give them more hours, basically. So they can do better, they can do much, much better working in a fast food place or at Walmart than they can even, you know, working at the library, even though we try to make it, you know, a, a much more welcoming environment for someone to work. I can't compete financially with other places in town. So therefore, we end up with a high, with a high staff turnover for our part-time employees. So that just, that just goes back to the importance of having full-time staff. Those are the staff that stay. They're the ones that make this a career, that they, they feel that loyalty to the city and to their job and the library. And they have, you know, they build on their skills, they do the trainings, they go to, you know, the classes that they need to go to. You just, you can't ask that of, I, I do ask that of the part-time staff, but you can't have that kind of skill set amongst that group. It's just, it's not the same, so.
Yeah, fly around. Thank you. I'll hold for now.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the presentation?
Well, I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
At this point, we will open it up to public comment. We'll remind everyone that I will set a timer up here for three minutes as I imagine that there's quite a few public comments. So that way it just kind of keeps us going and keeps everyone kind of to the point. All right, so first public comment. Mrs. Glumbo, welcome. Please state your name if you wouldn't mind for the record.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for listening to me for a few minutes. I want to just thank Christelle, my friend, who brought this to my attention, that you had a meeting this evening about the library. I am a retired school teacher at Murdock Elementary School. I've taught for thirty-seven years. I still substitute. I worked with various ages, but mostly little children, K one, two, many English learners. I can't stress enough how, how important the library is to a town, to a, to a school, to a, to the teachers that, that want the children to go and, and use these resources. I take my own grandchildren there, the many activities during the summertime they just loved. And I look forward to it every year. Ashley has been wonderful with my granddaughter. When she was tiny, I would take her after her preschool and the activities she would provide were, were just endless. I really feel that, that the library position, the, like, children's, are they, excuse me, got to frog my throat. Children's librarian position should be full-time. The library is a center of, of every community. And, and I feel like, just as many as others people have stated, our, our community does, does not have enough for the youth to do. It's, 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 it's a shame. So I would really like to see, you know, this, these programs continue. You know, keeps our population informed. It also provides a safe refuge for, for kids, families. And I feel like if we didn't have these programs, it would shut out also our economically disadvantaged children. Again, I, you know, worked with these kids for almost forty years of my life. So I, I really urge you to, to look into that and hope that we can come to, you know, consensus that this is important for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I give these letters to you guys? Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if I was able to. Okay. He started the clock.
Oh, you're good. Here, I'll pause it for you. Yeah, if you want, you can hand those to the city clerk and she'll disperse them to us. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Fady Irons. I am the Glen County Local Childcare Planning Council Coordinator. I am here representing the Glen County Office of Education. And I had composed a little letter to share out with you guys about the importance of keeping a full-time librarian. And so I'll try to keep all that fun information out while I just go over a few important side notes that I'm kind of piggybacking on with Dr. Garrison had to say a little bit. Our state reading rates are, we're here in California, we're at forty-seven percent of the national average. Here in Glen County, we're at thirty percent of the national average. So by not having a full-time children's librarian, you're probably thinking, how does that match up? But some of children's first learning experiences happen at a library. Not very many children in our communities are able to go to maybe preschools or now their, our TKs are happening. But so many different skills are developed by just hearing somebody, an adult, reading a story. So you get to build your vocabulary, your different languages, you have that imagination and curiosity comes alive. And most importantly, your listening skills. I think that's key when you start your kindergarten experiences, having those listening skills. And so as the LPC coordinator, I would like to invite you guys all to come to the library here on Thursday at ten AM. We are gearing up for and celebrating the Week of the Young Child and our local resource and referral agency, we will be doing a fun activity with the community. And if you can't make it, I hope you check out the library's website, but we are going to be doing all kinds of fun little activities and just getting the community involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Is there any further public comment? Seeing done, we'll go to discussion. Pleasure of the council. Any further discussion regarding this item?
I will.
Lori, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say I love a library and sadly I don't use it like I used to. I grew up going to the children's library at the old library in the basement, and it was actually my most favorite place to be. So I agree, libraries are cool, libraries are important. And I think, you know, when we look at the state of the city of Willows in twenty twenty-five, and as we all know, we've had financial difficulties. And so I just want to really preface any discussion to say that it is not that libraries, swimming pools, things for kids are not important because they are critically important. But we have choices to make. And, and, you know, I just hope we can all say we, we get that and we understand that. So so I just wanted to start with that. At a minimum, I hundred percent support a part-time children's librarian. And I say that simply because financially, I think that's all we can afford right now. Going forward, our, our, our money's not coming in yet from the increased sales tax. We're not even sure how much that's going to be. We have a lot of things we're trying to balance. But I think it's critically important that we get back a children's librarian. So summer programs can be planned and be implemented and so that our kids have activities to look forward to. I would like to look to staff, though, and just say that I'm a new council member, but I've been paying attention to council meetings for quite a while. And I don't remember the last time that we had a presentation from Jody, kind of a nitty-gritty library presentation. And in my mind, it's like, okay, we're open so many hours a day, so many days a week. Here's kind of where our programs fall in. Here's the kind of attendance we get for our programs. I mean, I'm looking at what was in our staff packet, and it's a list for twenty twenty-four of different activities. But for some of them, I mean, it was averaging two kids per event or five kids per event. Or, and, and so my question is, that's wonderful. If there's an event and two, where two to five kids can go, I think that's great. But what does a full-time children's librarian?
full-time children's librarian give us? Does that give us more outreach? Does it give us more participation? Does it give us more hours? Does it give it more bandwidth? I want, and I'm going to use the word accountability, because I think in government, we're all about accountability. So I'm going to say, if we're going to have this thing called a children's librarian, it's needed. And I would want to see it be super successful at a part-time level. But, you know, what can we do with part-time? And then if we're full-time, what else are we going to do? Does that mean we can cover more hours? Does that mean we can do more programs? Does that just mean we have more coverage for what we're trying to do? Because we all know staffing situations, we get short-staffed, and that's just something we have to deal with. So my vote will be, our agenda item is part-time. I hear you all a hundred percent, you know, wanting to have that full-time. And Dr. Garrison, your, your presentation tonight couldn't have been better, better planned. I mean, our kids need things to do. But I also firmly believe, and I grew up in Willows, sometimes, you know, the things we plan for our kids to do aren't what the kids want to do. And so I think that's that balance of not only are we providing the programs, but what are we doing to get them there? And I'm thinking some of that outreach is to the parents, because the kids aren't going to get there without the parents. So, so what are we doing? I mean, that's what I'd be looking to you for, Jody, I think, is some, this, this vision and this plan that says, here's what we're doing with minimal resources. And if I get more, this is our goal, is our goal to have so many programs and have them this level of attendance. And we're, and we're seeing some metrics. And maybe then we're partnering, and, and if we're already doing a lot of this, I apologize. I don't know everything we're doing. But I love what you're saying with the Office of Education. There's a lot of things happening that I, as a council member, I'm not even aware of. And so I think I'm, I'm looking to staff to, you know, paint the picture for me and show me how we're going to really do some amazing things if we can get to a full-time children's librarian in the future.
Well, and that's why you saw some of those statistics, some of the numbers were lower in those programs, because, you know, we were working with, you know, a newish, full-time children's librarian. So she was trying a lot of different, you know, what does the community want? What's going to appeal to them? What do we get higher attendance at? Which ones work and which ones don't? We were basically throwing a lot of things at the wall to see what stuck, what was more popular and what wasn't. So, yeah, you really saw really a range of, of programs and different things that we were trying to offer, to be honest. Those were a lot for a library of our size and just one, you know, a lot of places have more than one children's librarian or on staff. There's, there's multiple. It's an entire department. So to have one person that was actually offering all of those programs and collaborating, yeah, with, with GCOE, we do programs all of the time with them. That this is, this isn't our, our first go-around with Week of the Young Child. We always collaborate. And I think you saw in the summer reading program report, all of the different groups and agencies that we collaborate with to offer programs. But, yeah, what, what you're seeing a little bit was us being experimental and seeing what does the community want, what, you know, what, what's popular and what's not. But, yeah, a part-time, you know, we, we do the best that we can with the part-time children's librarian. But the reality is, that is only 19 hours a week. So how much that person can do out, can provide outreach? Frankly, I mean, they're, they're probably, with the part-time children's librarian, a lot of it is just serving, or their, their time's taken a lot with the classes and teachers' visits. So once you've got, you know, those coming in every week, then you have less time for, it, it really, it's a balance. So you, maybe you can offer Storytime and one after-school activity per week, plus the, you know, getting the kids in so they can get their first library cards and, and use the public library for the first time in orientation. You, you just, yeah, you just can't offer as much as you can when you have a full-time.
Well, and so again, and I understand, but, you know, I, I think looking back at the programs and, and it's what I've said for the city. If we have limited resources, I want to pick three or four things and do them well, if we can, you know? So I get the experimentation, but at some point, what was the most successful? And maybe that's what we're doing this summer. Do you have other part-time people that can sign the kids up for the library card? That, I wouldn't think that'd just have to be the children's librarian doing that. So just for us as a council, getting a better idea of division of duties. And if we can't afford full-time, let's make the best of what we can with our part-time and look at the programs that were well-attended last year and offer those and continue that process of reaching out to say what's missed. But we only have so much money in the bank, you know, or money available at this point. So personally, I can't commit to a full-time children's librarian today.
I was just going to ask, is it possible, the Assistant Library Director position that's being considered by the council on the upcoming budget, that that individual could assist with some of the outreach, outreach and some of the groundwork that is required, maybe not the actual doing and implementation, but the, you know, marketing and, you know, the preparation for those kinds of programs, can they assist with that?
Management side of it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say she already does. I mean, it was the two of us yesterday doing the classroom orientation while I was doing the Storytime and walking the kids around the library and talking to them about everything she was doing, their, their library cards as, as fast as she could behind the scenes, so that they would be able to check out when we got done. So, I mean, we're already doing that. We just, that was, that was on a Monday when we were closed. I came over from Orleans specifically to do that, because I, you know, I can't, have a hard time telling people no and didn't want to turn away a teacher with a class full of kindergartners who wanted to get their first library cards. But, but those are, those are stretches. That's, that was us finding time outside of our regular duties. And you're already asking somebody to combine two jobs into one, and then you're asking them to do a third one, which we, I would say we already, we, we do, we do, we've already, you know, put on lots of different hats, and we're glad to do it so that we can keep providing those services. But there, there's a point where, you know, you, you have to confess that, you know, your plate is already full and you can't, can't put anymore on it, so.
So, so what, how do you schedule the three part-time people? So my understanding is we have three part-time people also. So do they, are they able to issue library cards and?
Yeah, absolutely, they do. When they were at the front desk, anybody can, any one of our staff can issue a library card. But when you have a, a class full of, you know, kids coming in, that's usually done outside of our open hours. It's a little chaotic if you tried to do it during open hours. So it's something that's, so we, we have them already fully scheduled from when we open to when we close, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, or five, depending what the day is. So that's something that, that takes place usually in the mornings or outside of those hours. Like I said, we accommodate them the best that we can. It's just, it's not the same. Being able to have somebody there that, that does that.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Yeah, I follow up with that. You oversee all of the county libraries, Orland and the county. That was obviously done collectively between all of us for cost savings. Is a full-time children's librarian appropriate? Who would handle all of Orland, Willows, and the three smaller counties, or one and a half, or something of that nature?
Have one already, full-time.
I, I'd look at the global picture. And if you have a librarian in Orland that's chasing GCOE and their programs, and you have a Willows one chasing the same programs, it seems likely that it would be savings, that they would be putting it together for Elk Creek and everybody else at the same time.
It, it makes a lot of sense for one, one person to plan, program, make those, you know, to be fair, Ashley has already been planning and, and coordinating with the other agencies to schedule programs for the, for our summer reading program this summer, with the hopes that we would be able to put one on, even though, yes, she's now an employee of Orland, because she was already calling those places. She was, you know, getting those people on the calendar for Orland and for the branches. She went ahead and did them for Willows also. So, and, and, yeah, like, for, for example, Storytime, our, our most popular, most common program that we offer each week for the zero to five, you wouldn't need to do a different one for each, for each library or each location. Plan it once and then present it, you know, however many different times that you need to. I'm not sure if I'm fully following where you're going with this, but if you're, if you're suggesting possibly a shared children's librarian between.
I'm just asking.
Absolutely would be a wonderful idea. It would save, it would, it would save duplicating, you know, things in, in two different places. I don't know if that's something that's.
I don't know if it's possible.
I don't, honestly, I don't know either, but.
From, from my background, I know nothing about running a library and the programs that you're talking about. But I have hired hundreds of people and managed and played, put people here and there and try to cover things. And if I have multiple offices and something that needs to be done for each one of those, it was better to put one person in that oversaw all of them. And I don't know whether it fits within the city agreement with Orland and the county and everybody throwing in together. I just look at the global picture, and it makes sense that we would find that same savings with the children's librarian that we find with, with you overseeing five libraries.
It would probably be a little bit similar to being stretched pretty thin. But honestly, yeah, I think it, it could be an excellent idea. If, if it was something that could be arranged, I think it makes a lot of sense. And it would.
Would that be up to you to pursue?
I could certainly try.
Well, I'm just.
I mean, if we all.
Saying it, as the librarian, you would pursue what is best for all county libraries. So you're setting the tone of what you would need, and it would come from the county and, and the whole nine yards. And so I'm just asking questions, because I'm looking at the same situation as, until we actually have dollars rolling in from our sales tax, it's difficult to make sure that we can cover, you know, we just spent $2,500 on a, on a broken Public Works equipment that we hadn't planned, fire trucks and other things that need repairs. And I don't want us to be in a spot where we can't do some of that stuff. And from the Finance Committee, I recognize that in the first six months, we spend, what, 60% of our budget, and we get 28% of our revenue. So it's a cash flow issue as we go through the end of the year. And so I'm just trying to make sure we, we do the right thing from the council. At the same time, we meet the needs of, of our children. And I'm for a children's librarian. I'm just kind of want to make sure that we don't put the cart before the horse and not have the ability to meet our financial needs, which you're charging us public to make sure we do.
If I could just recommend that maybe the council consider having, you know, Jody and I work on this over the next fiscal year, looking at options and move forward with the part-time position. Because if you recall from the forecasting model last year, you know, the, the tight period is actually right now financially, because it's, we've sort of spent all down our reserve and the new money hasn't come in. And so this is for the next nine months, it's probably going to be our leanest time, actually. I know that doesn't make sense to people when they think a sales tax was just approved, but we've only been collecting it for eight days. So this is, this is.
We don't get our first check until June.
Sorry?
We won't get our first check till.
July will be the first check, right? And we'll get to see how we're performing. But I'm just saying, like, this is the leanest time, actually. It wasn't even like nine months ago. It's like now.
Right.
Councilor Busby, anything to add?
Yeah, I, I'd like to. First off, I have strong support of, of reactivating the part-time position, very much believe in the programs, very much believe in the mission. I, I do want to echo a lot of what Lori and Rick have said. We're charged with the whole picture, not just one little bit. And just to put a few, you know, we talk about, hey, we're broke, we're broke, we're broke. Let's put some numbers to that. We are running at a $1.1 million deficit this year. That's a lot of money. The law enforcement's getting more expensive. The Fire Department needs a lot of things to stay current and stay up to state standards and everything like that. So I think finding ways to, we've asked everybody, Public Works, we've asked everybody to like, hey, really figure out where the efficiencies are and do the best of what you can. Because right now, to put a number to it, 1.1 million. So we're almost out of cash in the general reserve. I think we're going to get down to, we're projected to be down to half a million dollars. So we're, we're almost out of money. Where we've got some forecasting models on the Measure I, we don't know what that's going to be like yet. The other things that we know is things are going to get more expensive than what we projected than they, like, at a rate faster than we projected them to get more expensive. So there are other things, like this candle's being burnt, not at two ends, it's being burned at like six ends. And we're trying to manage all of it as a whole, for the benefit of law enforcement, fire, all, all the services that we're doing. So I, I know it's not the answer everybody wants. But, but we're, we're behind you. We just have to do it responsibly.
Councilor Hanson, anything to add?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll try to make it as brief as, as possible. First of all, thank you to our citizens who come out to our meeting tonight. Thank you. It's always good to see citizens at a meeting. It's your meeting. And thank you for attending. And thank you for your input. And I agree with everything my colleagues have said so far. And the only one, as the mayor always goes last, and, and the evidence hasn't gone yet, but my three colleagues, I agree with everything you've said. I'm fully supportive of the library. And Lori, I'll piggyback on something that you opened up with. I was born here, Glen General, just like you were, Lori, and, you know, a, a long time ago, lifetime, lifelong Glen County resident, but I didn't move into the city until 41 years ago, when, when we bought our house. So, anyway, I lived out in the ranch. So I went to, went K through, through 12 Princeton. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Cador boy, okay? Princeton, Princeton Unified School District. And when I was in high school, the high school library was the hangout spot. It was, it was fantastic. You know, and, and we were a bunch of, a bunch of, I was a, I was a farm boy and a, and a science geek and, and went to farm and, and be a cop and all that sort of thing. And that's what I did. But that's, you know, so I fully support libraries. Ms. Lolly, Jody, Ms. Lolly was fantastic. My, my 11-year-old granddaughter, Trinity, some of you know Trinity, great, great girl. She loved Ms. Lolly and, and my wife and me, sometimes, mostly my wife did the heavy lifting, would, would bring her down to Ms. Lolly's sessions all the time, all the time. She loved it. So excellent program, children's librarian services, outstanding programs. It's great. And it's, and it's one little piece in a, in a big wheel, a big tractor, right? They were, you know, egg, egg. Doc Garrison, what you said, hitting on everything you said, you know, absolutely true, frightening, but true. But one thing you mentioned about the dinner table conversation, which we always get in my family, right? My parents, and we did that the best we could with our kids. That's important. So that's common sense parenting. That's, that's another big, big cog in the wheel or spokes, more spokes in the wheel. So it's all part of a, you know, children's librarian, you know, common sense, good upbringing from your home and, and siblings and friends and relatives and, and, you know, you, you know, your village, it was mentioned earlier, it's, you know, raised, all being raised in a village, it's all, it's all important. So things that we strive with, 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 with our three kids and, and, and with our grandkids. But I'll stop babbling on about all that. But, you know, right now, I'm fully supportive of a part-time children's librarian. And I'm glad, Marty, you mentioned, you mentioned, and Rick, with your discussion, mentioned reevaluating this. What I recommend is we approve the, the, the part-time children's librarian position tonight and reevaluate it next fiscal year to see where we at with, with our budget, as mentioned. The sales tax increase kicked in on April 1st, as, as most of you probably know that. We, as was just mentioned, and that was going to be exactly what I was going, going, you know, to, to focus on tonight. Those tax receipts won't be coming in until midsummer, okay? July, late July, probably. We've got a lot of evaluating citywide to do, as Matt said. There's a lot broken staff-wise here, and it's, you know, we're, we're still a fully functioning city, providing outstanding city services. And I want to commend all of our staff for doing that. But it's all about balancing, it's a balancing act with the budget. It's a balancing act. All city departments have been impacted for years, budget-wise. It's, that's no secret. The Fire Department had, had five career firefighters until, oh, Chief, Chief Peabody was fire chief and also Acting City Manager at the time, when Willow's Fire career staff went from five. And that Willow's Fire had a staff of five, I believe, since 1947, until about, well, four or five years ago, now has a staff of four. Public Works Department, who are out there doing outstanding work as well, keeping everything running, you know, in the city, all the infrastructure, they've had openings for, for years, for years. They've been limping along, just, just barely having the staffing to get things done. So every, every department in the city has sacrificed and sacrificed wholeheartedly. And I appreciate that, and the, and the city council appreciates that. I think you're hearing tonight that the, this council, myself and this council, fully supports library services and, and children's library services. So I, I would love to be in the financial position one year from now to recommend hiring a, a full-time children's librarian. Hopefully we will be, but right now, we just can't afford it. Part-time is, is my recommendation, at least that will cover, you know, much-needed services and help out with the workload. And also, right now, this council is extremely seriously considering creating an Assistant Library Director position. It was mentioned a little earlier by one of my colleagues here. We're currently considering that, that topic now. And so stay tuned for more information on that moving forward. So stay tuned for more information on that moving forward. And that's, that's a huge benefit to the library also. But hopefully in one year, we can, uh, recommend, uh, uh, hiring a full-time children's librarian. But right now I think. I, I know that part-time is, is, that's flat, all we can afford because we've got an entire city. Uh, to run into balance here and, uh, uh, so, uh, that's my recommendation and I'll stop, stop there. So. But thanks again for coming out tonight. Jody, thank you, uh, to you and the library team for, uh, providing an outstanding library here. We've got a great library. And, uh, fully supportive of it. So thank you. It's all ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I guess it's my turn now. So a couple of things on this. Yes, the library position was frozen. So was the mechanic's position. Which has made it hard for. Our public works to do a lot of safety work. It's made our fire department have to seek out. Other avenues to get. Safety equipment fixed. Their apparatus is fixed, which are life-saving apparatus is correct. So. It's not just the library that's being hit by this. Um, and the way that I felt this letter came across on Facebook, I personally felt offended by it. And I'm going to say that because. I never got a single email. Until this letter was posted on Facebook about this being a situation. I never had our library director come stand in front of this council. And tell us, I want a full-time children's librarian once. I had one person two weeks ago. And now I'm being put on the defensive. With three days' notice with a letter from Facebook. And everyone showing up up here. And I would love to say, yes, let's get a full-time librarian. Absolutely. The kids deserve it. I do everything I possibly can for my kids. And a lot of children. And everything that I do. Okay, unfortunately. I cannot say, yes, let's do a full-time librarian right now. Why? Why hasn't there been a wish list given to the city manager? About, hey, this is what the library needs. We know this tax money is coming in. This is what we need for the fiscal year. Why has that not, that not been handled? Why was this not brought up to us back in December when we knew that this? Sales tax has been passed. Hey, can we get the part-time position in here? Get the person going? And maybe when the fiscal year comes around, we can change it to a full-time position? Cause that's what I would like to see. I like to see us start with the part-time person back in the position and switch it to full-time. But unfortunately, that was never brought up at all to any of us up here.
I'm, I'm really sorry that that wasn't communicated to you. Um, we, we have, we've been asking, we, we've asked, you know, the library board for. For updates from Councilmember Busby about, um, filling it as a part-time position, you know, not, not just as, as full-time, but you know, we were usually asked if we could have it filled as a part-time position. So. All apologies for me that you weren't aware of that, but I. I guess I wasn't aware that you weren't aware of that. We thought that we were, we were asking.
Well, that's one of the biggest things.
Or that.
It's a communication thing and he took the spot over from me.
No, I know, but I, I mean, we've, we've had email, I've, I've emailed with the city manager about it. I, you know, I, I'm not sure how we. Didn't get that communicated to you correctly. So I, my apologies. I didn't realize that you weren't aware.
Yeah. Yeah. So things have been like, uh. My position on the library board liaison is to pass along to, uh, uh, information, but, uh, it is not. Uh, I don't think it's appropriate for me to kind of bring up any kind of policy or anything like that. That has to go through the proper staff channels and everything. So. While, hey, I think we've been talking about this for a little while. Um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's. I, I think it's just a breakdown in how the process is supposed to work and who's supposed to do, do what.
Correct. While it was, yes, no, we talked about this position when it was still being filled. It was never brought up to me when I was there that I can recall. About it needing to be refilled. Cause there was quite a few meetings I ended up missing because of the multiple other things that I'm usually helping out do. Okay, so was it brought up? To the mayor at that time or any of the city council members? Hey, we need to bring this up. Like. That's what I'm getting at is I have, I have been sitting here, we've been having these conversations. With a lot of people. You guys have all of our, all of our emails are right here. And then I never got, uh, we never got a joint email saying, hey. We're the, we're the library and we want to make sure we get a full-time position. And, and instead it goes on Facebook though, and we're getting attacked. And I feel like we're getting attacked on that.
I, if I could just interject, I, I think, again, I'm new to the council, but I think when we have the library, um. Friends of the li- the liaison that you're to, the board. That's for, um, kind of day-to-day what's going on. And I think the, the piece that's broken, if you will, or that's just, we've had a lot of change in people and staff. Is that when there's a, a department has a need for a financial or staffing, that needs to come through staff channels. That's not a casual. Ad-hoc committee meeting or liaison is speaking for a department. So I think, you know, we could talk about this all evening and we don't need to, it's not really productive. But I think that's what I'm taking away from this, that as the library board meets and, and council member Busby is there as the liaison. He's there to, you know, hear in general what's going on, bring back a little report to us. But if there's staffing needs and there's budget needs. That needs to come from whether it's the fire chief. It's finance, it's the library, it's public works. That needs to come through formal channels and be an agendized item for budget discussions or staffing discussions or part of our budget discussions. So I'm just going to apologize if that hasn't been happening and there's been misconceptions. That's, that's half of our problems, I think, sometimes in a small town is we all have our own ideas about how things should be working. So I, that would be my takeaway for this evening is that. Poor communications or, or, or misconceived ideas of how the process work. And I think we could just move on from there, at least for.
And with me, I want us to come together. I want us to be able to work together. And I feel like. A communication avenue of if you have my email, I'm more than open. For you to send me an email. I'll get back to you as soon as I possibly can. Okay, I try and do that with anything, I think, but we all try to do that. We're not up here because we're getting paid, you know, thousands of dollars. We're doing this because we want to help. And we think that you guys want to do this because you want to help. I think that we all have a positive. Influence that we want to put into our community and help it. I just feel like sometimes the avenues that need to happen is a direct communication. And not, and honestly, I, I. Loathe the idea of, of Facebook and social media, um, and its effect that it has on our society today. I'm a huge fan of face-to-face conversation.
Just for the benefit of the public at home, just come up to the microphone. Otherwise, no one who's watching online can hear what you're saying out there. And it's important.
As a new friend of the library. The Friends of the Library. Wrote this letter. So that we could make it. Aware, make people aware that we were hoping for a, the same level of, um, summer, um. Children's librarian as we had last year because it was so successful. So when I posted the letter on what's happening in Willow's. It was very benign. There was nothing in there that I felt was attack, attacking. However, if Evan, you feel like you felt like you were kind of attacked, maybe because I gave those letters to everybody before the meeting. I deeply apologize. But I also made sure I didn't comment on anybody who said something negative. Because that is not, not cool. That's not, um. I can't.
But that's what it, that's what it sparks. And that's what I'm trying to, I don't want to spark negativity. One comment I read on there attacked our city manager.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't even respond to that person.
I think that our city manager has been doing a great job in the situation that she was handed when she came into this position.
Yeah, and I, and I stay out of all that.
Right? I just feel like there's ways around to hopefully for us to hear around that.
There were 51 people and I would say 50 people. Said positive things, maybe 49 people. The two people that said things that were a little bit. Off color, I'd say inappropriate. I didn't even respond to them purposely. I wanted it to be positive. And so I apologize if, you know, you, I, I was under the assumption that. Um, Jody had already requested what she needed from city manager, from, from, um, Matt. And so I, you know, I'm new at all this and I'm like, well, I thought all of that had taken place. So when we drafted the letter. I was, I wasn't trying to get anybody or anything. I was just trying to make sure the public. If they needed to come and voice their concerns about how they wanted to keep that same level that they had last summer. Because it was so successful. So. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And next time if there's any kind of, you know, confusion or something that needs to be addressed directly, I am more than happy to address. Anybody directly. And I'm sure that is how the Friends of the Library feel as well.
No, and I, I honestly believe that everyone wants to do a positive thing. So I'd like to get, all get back to the matter at hand here. I just had to at least state my piece that I just wish that, you know. We would have been made aware, other than, you know, like I said, we heard about this a couple of weeks ago. And that's why I got put on this agenda. So.
Mayor Hudson, I don't, I don't want to drag anything out, but if it helps, I can forward you the emails, um, you know, I, um, if it'll help. Understand, you know, where a breakdown in communication is going, but. We did email the city manager in November about going to a part-time children's librarian. So. Um, I, I, I just, I, I'm, I thought that. That had already been kind of addressed and thought out and, um, was no longer on the table. So that's why we're back here discussing it again today. I, I didn't, I had no idea that. Some sort of procedure wasn't followed correctly, um, in your opinion. So I apologize for that. But I, I did feel that we had done everything that we could.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah. At this point, there's a motion to be called before.
I would move. That we. Now's the time, if you have something to say.
So I am one of the few, um, families that would come to circle time. And, um, I think that my question is if it's okay more directed at Jody. Um, it's my understanding as one of the parents that. When Ashley, that means by the way, she's always been amazing, um, when she had moved over to Orland. That she was still coming over just, um, one day a week, but it was arranged. To Mondays instead of Wednesdays, but that she was still coming, um, one day a week. And I don't know, I understand that there's a lot of, um, budget reasoning. Yeah, I don't know if this has to do with being strategic. We all took a small discussion that. I mean.
Please, you need to speak to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Instead of this, this direction, so we, so it's recorded properly.
But I know that it was, um, really appreciated that she was still able to come one day a week. Um. We've even said, even if there was just one day a month that she could come, I know that it wasn't utilized a lot by families and that budgets are still being worked out. So anyways, I'm just presenting that as a question or option.
Well, yeah, uh, I, and I think that's part of what we were. Discussing tonight was going back to the part-time, but, or you're specifically speaking of like actually doing it or?
I just mean from a budgetary standpoint, it would even eliminate the, uh, you know, the adding of a part-time. And it would just bring back.
We have been short-staffed in Orland. We actually are down one part-time person too now. So it, you know. The discussion with, um, council member Thomas. With the, the shared, I guess the shared funding would have helped, you know. Helped us fill the positions in Orland that would then allow us to use Ashley basically over here. Sorry, that didn't come out quite right. Ashley, I hope you know what I, um, mean by that. So yeah, it's more, it's a staffing issue in both places. If, if, if both places are fully staffed, then things like that work, but. Um, you know, obviously when you're understaffed in one place, then you, you can't. Can't, uh, loan people out quite as easily. So.
Thank you so much. And, um, thank you for all that, all of you do. Yeah. Yeah, just, I look forward to at some point seeing more children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I would make a motion and thank you for all of you coming and your participation tonight. I would move that we, um. Move forward to hiring a part-time children's librarian to implement children's programs at the Willow's Library.
Seconded.
I have a first and second. Uh, any further discussion by the council members? I actually have one question on this. I noticed that it's limited to 19 hours. Is there a reason for that?
We have to stay under the, um, 960 hours, I believe. Is that correct? For, for the employee in a per year to not become a CalPERS employee? So that often ends up being about. What, um, a lot of part-time positions end up being if you're trying to not. Have them enter CalPERS. Cause if you go over the 960. A year, there's no going back. It's, that person becomes a CalPERS employee.
Okay. I didn't remember the 960. I just was wondering because I. Used to part-time being anything under 30 hours.
Probably make some small adjustments, but we just have to keep under that. But I think, I don't know if that's, um. All the part-time employees do 19 hours a week? I'm not really sure.
Right. You can't go over the, it's really the, the annual total, but that averages out to 19 hours.
So I, my question here is if. We allow some play in that space there. Between that 19 to the 30. Uh, just still keep it part-time for now, but to offer the additional service, hopefully get some extra time in there. Then to start rebuilding the program since November. And as we, us revisit this at our. Annual budget for a full-time position. Would that allow for that room since we have the 960 hours that we're more of which worried about? Instead of the. Limiting it to just the 19?
I would say for now, we could let staff work that out. I mean.
I'm, that's what I know that, but that's why I'm asking the question. Is that something that's possible or no? Since we have six months until the fiscal, end of the fiscal year or not even that.
Calendar year.
Con, no, the fiscal.
Fiscal ends in June.
The budget year. Yeah, it would be a new budget item, correct? Or is it to the end of the calendar year?
Um, in terms of the 960 hours? I, do you know how, how those are calculated?
Fiscal year is 960-hour applications with CalPERS is based on a fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay.
Formerly was based on a calendar year until, which is a whole lot easier, right? When you think about it, but, uh, that was changed probably, I don't know, well, several years ago. Was changed back to fiscal year.
So based on that presumably, if we hired somebody now between now and June 30th, they could work. I guess more than 19 hours a week. And then the new fiscal year starts July 1, and then probably after that, we'd want to monitor it. More closely to make sure it's closer to 19.
And then when we, if we revisit it changing to a full-time position, maybe after the summer. That wouldn't matter anymore, correct?
Go back to the 19 hours?
Take away the part-time position, go back to full-time? In the next fiscal year? Are you? So what I'm saying is, is right now we don't have to worry about the 960 because we don't have enough time between now and. The end of the fiscal year.
Technically, that would seem correct. Yes, based on what. Um, Councilmember Hanson just said about how. The 960 is calculated on a fiscal year. So we technically have. Well, a little less than three months left in the fiscal year.
Okay.
So a part-time person could work still part-time, but more than 19 hours and not exceed the 960.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there's a way for us to change that in the contract. So that's a possibility? Because the summertime, I think in the summertime is more the children librarian's busy time, correct? Am I wrong in, right in saying that?
That's accurate.
So I'm wondering if there's a way, instead of limiting it to just the 19 hours per week. To say, hey, during the summertime, she can work up to 30. Or this. Can she?
Yeah, I have to, I have to take and make sure that CalPERS, that, that also weekly hours aren't triggered at all. I don't know if they are. I don't think they are, but. Not sure. I mean, we'd have to.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a middle ground between the full-time and the part-time position.
I understand.
Works into our part-time.
Um, I think that I'd have to work on the hour part with Joanne and then talk to Jody about her needs and how she would want to. Carve out a position, you know, will that work for a part-time person? Does it work for them to work? You know, 30 hours for three months and then suddenly go to. 16. I don't, you know, I don't know if that's a way that you could attract a part-time person. So, I mean, there's a lot, I think. We have to figure out internally, but we certainly can work on it from that angle. If that's something that seems possible and would be helpful to the library.
Yeah, definitely something to look into.
Does that need an amendment to?
No, just call for the question. Call for the question.
Wait, what?
Call for the vote.
Sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed 5-0. With that, we will have council correspondents. I didn't receive any.
Thank you for coming.
For attending.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Garrison.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christabel.
Diehard stay.
Did anybody receive any council correspondence?
Negative. Nope.
All right. Uh, next up is, uh, city council comments and reports. Councilor Busby, we'll start with you.
All right. So we had, uh, two different committee meetings, uh, in the last week. Uh, first off, we had a chamber meeting. Lori came with me to kind of, uh, introduce me to.
introduce me to Colleen and everything. It was less agendized and more like, hey, getting to know each other and getting to know the lay of the land. Colleen was very helpful, very gracious, and it sounds like that we did talk a little bit about Lamb Derby and all that, and it sounds like their Lamb Derby is going to be bigger than last year and has some new elements and new things coming, so that's going to be a lot of fun. And then we had our economic development meeting, both Lori and I, Lori and I, that's an as-needed basis, she and I have been doing that every Monday. We kind of discussed a little bit of a methodology as to where we're headed, what the point of the, the the committee is and how we can best, best serve. Just a few things, I'm gonna let Lori kind of talk a little bit here. We're, we're kind of looking at this as a, a four kind of elements on how we, how we generate more economic development for the, for the city sustainably without, you know, taking away from other things, so Lori?
I like how we get here and it's like, are you talking or am I talking, who's talking? So, you know, Matt and I have been talking and meeting and, you know, economic development is multifaceted and that's, we've kind of been trying to break it down and we're getting to that point of saying, as a city, how do we go forward with this, are we talking, you know, a staff person, a new like commission, economic development commission, or just council members and staff doing things? And we're setting up a meeting with city manager to kind of flesh that out. But essentially, you've got community aesthetics and the marketability, the community thinking is Willow's going to identify something as a point of interest or something that we're known for and then we get on the map and trying to attract new visitors to come here and that's kind of a marketing thing, so community aesthetics, marketability. Then there's our, our business retention, business expansion, taking care of our current businesses, making sure they have what they need to be successful. If they're looking to expand, you know, what do they need to help with that? And then what I would consider true economic development is, is going out there and looking at bringing in new business, new industry, true growth. Some of the questions we're framing around that is, you know, who leads that effort, who are our partnerships, do we have incentives? What locations are available, what infrastructure is needed? Do we need to annex anything or do we have plenty of space already, those are some of the bullet points. And then, of course, housing is kind of critical to everything, if we're going to grow, we have to have more housing and that's, you know, that is what it is. But these four main components, it's not like you're only doing one at a time, they're, they're all things that have to be sort of happening simultaneously. So I was cleaning out my office and because I was on the council before, like twenty-five years ago, and I worked doing economic development for Glen County, I was amazed at what I found on my bookshelf as I was cleaning out my office. So I came to, Matt and I met Monday and then he shows up at the coffee shop and I've got a stack of paperwork and he's like, what are we doing today, Lori? So just looking back at, and, and I know this council's looked at past stuff before, but I'm going to tell you, Willow's has not changed that much, so when we look back at two thousand, Willow's did an actual visioning plan and we had a lot of public participation in that, I still have the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats from that.
You have the SWOT analysis?
I do, I have.
I would love to have, I've been looking for a copy of that, I, I lost it. It was in my office and it's, I'm not, don't have it in office anymore.
But I, I've only taken a quick glance at it, but I'm going to tell you, not much has changed.
No, I imagine not.
So, so we really have just been trying to do a lot of brainstorming, kind of pulling together what are the resources and then trying to get at the point of coming back to the full council and saying, you know, what does this look like, what are we going to do, and obviously tying it into the vision and goal-setting plan that the city did last year that we're revisiting in May and taking, you know, some of those things and so, we've been doing a lot of talking, pulling together information and, you know, we'll try and get to a point where we have a plan of action, you know, here's kind of what we'll be doing, like the who, what, when and where. Got a good summary?
Yep.
All right.
All we got. Perfect. Councilmember Hanson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you sitting down? I actually have nothing to report, how about that? How about that, but wait till next time, because there's a bunch of meetings coming up. You okay, Rick? But I, I did miss something and I want to apologize because I, I happened to think about it late the other night. And I don't think that I ever publicly thanked Maria Ehorn or or very dedicated, well, our former, longtime city employee and after she left city employment and pursued other employment, she was our planning commissioner, very dedicated, very good planning commissioner, I don't think I publicly thanked Maria for her service, dedicated service to the planning commission, I just want to do that publicly. So she's a fine person, she did an outstanding job for, for us here in the planning commission, so I just want to say thank you, Maria, and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pride, anything to add on?
Attended the planning commission meeting, I try and attend those every month. So we have some, a conditional use permit that's having some, they're not completely complying with it, so they're working on that. And then we, obviously, we interviewed applicants for the planning commission. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Thomas, anything to report?
I have no report.
Okay.
I, as well, have nothing to report, so then we will go to city manager's report.
One thing, I just, I'm going to use, again, use this opportunity to remind the public and everyone that the second quarterly Finance and Measure I Oversight Committee Town Hall Meeting will be on Tuesday, April fifteenth at five thirty. It'll be an opportunity for the public to give input and thoughts and ideas about Measure I sales tax, the revenue, and even just generally the direction of the city, so hopefully it'll be a back, good back-and-forth discussion, and I'm figuring out and working on the presentation right now. And that's going to be here?
Yeah, it'll be here in council chambers next Tuesday.
Okay. With that, we will be going into closed session. Before we go into closed session, is there any public comment on anything that is in closed session? Okay, with that, we'll be going to closed session at seven fifty-six.
All right, go for it.
Okay, we are coming back from closed session at nine twenty-two. At this moment, we will adjourn our April eighth meeting, everyone have a good night. Oh, sorry, report out is, information received, direction was given to staff. After that, we will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two, have a good night.